Here.
Councilor Bennetfield.
Yes.
Councilor King.
We're here.
Councilor Beck.
Here.
Mayor Short.
Here.
And Councilor Sovereign.
Here.
And Councilor Watts.
Here.
Thank you, Kim. Changes and additions to the agenda. Councillors, I'd like your permission to move up the new business sections three, four, five, and six. The depot bay salmon bake, Chamber of Commerce, and City Park event and reservation request to after public comments, if that's okay. Three, two, six, add two. Yeah. Um, regarding the action, other changes and additions. Oh, wait, it's going to be consent agenda, we have minutes, accounts payable, and our business license activity report. Is there a motion to accept these as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
I'll submit.
It's been moved and seconded to accept our minutes of July, uh, June 2nd, 26th, July 11th, 23rd, for accounts payable and our business license activity estimated. Is there any discussion or motion?
I would like to say something, uh, here. And I would like to say kudos to staff, to the quality of our minutes. You can take a look at our minutes, I encourage everybody to do that, it's part of the trend. It's, it's the single most important part of transparency in government. Uh, and it's also very helpful to me as a councillor that and find the nuance that is well preserved. So, congratulations, thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we have, uh, Lexington County Sheriff. Come on up, deputy. Can you just mentally report?
Where was I?
From the top.
Oh.
Can you have a report?
Yes.
So.
Any questions on anything going on with that report? Unfortunately, that's kind of a weird report because I was sick from two weeks.
Really?
Yes.
For sure.
Sometimes sick, so. Good now, but yeah. Been working down the, the vote wash again, just much as trying to get this to pay and. We did, and here and there, so it's still going forward with that. Um, also making progress off of. I don't know if anyone's been able to go up there and see the last day or two, but there's full life and it's kind of a chess match for. There's.
There's been action.
There's been, yes.
Okay.
I said positive action.
Yes, good.
Um, I know there's some other questions abroad where Kim, as far as other residences down there, probably you could go about. Get back into living down there. Not, but certain things they face, um, like accident at another level, so.
Okay.
Other than guys from lost traffic, I mean, still plenty busy here. Um, I have been approached by a few people and they, and it is not really a question I need to answer. But just always been changing products, need more and more, and it's not new. They were talking about some kind of lighting system across the place. Um.
Yeah.
Again, yeah, nothing I need to answer too, why would you, it don't happen, but it's been a lot of times to me, so.
Thank you, yes, it is a safety concern that we got looked into and we don't have the big facts.
No, we don't, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I ask it?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Deputy, also, what kind of directives you can give them with regard to handling homeless complaints? Somebody, uh.
I honestly haven't had too many homeless complaints. Um, now that I, off the top of my head, I dealt with one who was on public property, sorry, private property. Um, I contacted them and it be moved by law. Other than that, I haven't been given directives. I know that there are things in the works because of certain house bills or, I think they're house bills, not sentence bills. Um, they came out of Boise State as far as if someone is camping on public property, they would be close to essentially be killed.
Okay.
I don't know if you're already familiar with that. Uh, and I know that there are always steps needed to give them that place to go.
Okay, uh, question number two on burglaries. Uh, have there been any burglaries in town and why are you doing to raise your presence in the commercial areas in the harbor? Uh, I can recall a burglary attempt, but it was at night at one point.
Right, as they typically are, we're not giving, again, physically, I saw it when we went through years, as opposed to something that you're from five years. The end progress for recalls are coming. Typically not, they're not people that don't want to be seen, so I also have to get night. Uh, but I myself to deter, I just do a lot of.
At night?
No, my personal, because I'm working day, day for now, I can't speak to the other duties because I don't know what exactly. But as people really part of Canada, should be doing the same thing as I was.
Um, and finally, were you involved on that pedestrian accident that occurred in depot bay here recently?
Was that a bicyclist or?
Yeah, somebody was hit by a vehicle.
Was that in the city limits, depot bay?
In the city limits.
I would.
Did anybody heard that? I saw an OSB report.
He was within the city. With hardly, maybe.
Oh, no.
Was that a bicyclist, is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would, that's.
Okay.
That's something I would have responded to with that one, but.
Alright, that's, that's, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Question, um, during, uh, the night out, um, a citizen approached me about the traffic in theaters in Miami. Um, who might have been the same person to talk to me, because she said that she talked to the Sheriff's Department. This has been another phone call on the air, it was, and it was constantly directed by. She was under the impression that if she was like a veteran, then you need to go to the state police and that might help. Is that correct, or what should I tell her?
Just, I mean, yeah, the, the path would have to travel, yes, would have to travel to state, ODOT. Uh, and then it would, I think, when we were talking about it, county roads would also maybe have to get involved in something. Uh, but again, it's, at the sheriff's office, my understanding, it wouldn't start with us.
So it would start with ODOT?
ODOT state, yes.
Okay.
Because again, even though the, the highway is within the city limits, state still overrules ownership, um, yeah.
It'd be nice to get some of that.
Right.
I'm sorry, I missed the part that, are you talking about speeding on 101?
Yeah, it'd be speeding and, um, having wenching lights or some type of deterrent for speeders going downtown on 101.
Okay, so one of the things we probably want to start with is figuring out what we want, because we, I know that during that last, we talked about what to do of it. The constable's office, and we've gotten that report from the highway, the ODOT folks that said that they would not necessarily support putting something up there because they feel that based on the accidents, that was enough up there, but if we wanted to put something in there, it would cost us upwards of several hundred thousand dollars. And they would have to fit all these requirements that are very challenging to me. If you're talking about speeding, um, that's a difference, ODOT doesn't like to reduce speed, they would want to do a traffic study first.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know when the last one was done here, and they, I'm not sure, if you're looking at downtown, we are slower than 25, but based on past experiences, working with what they try to do in, uh, our previous vehicles, we're trying to slow down some of these areas, they're reluctant to go slower than that.
I would say a lot of people stop forced speeding, granted, I know that I'm a professional, where people hate me sometimes. Um, a lot of them say like, we didn't know it was 25, well, it's literally posted. Uh, for locals around here, obviously they know what the signs are, they could tell you probably exactly what it was. Uh, I don't know if even a flashing light around, a flashing board or something, if that would be maybe doable, a question to ask. Some of them used to say, oh, even more than 30.
Right, one of the things I really wanted to talk to the council about for next year, but it's actually been on. Uh, getting that, the, the lights, the speeds, ones that say you're going a lot of.
Yes.
But that's in for a budget next year, because those are.
Good.
Yeah, and people are, they're.
And we would put one, I thought, on.
And we had the speed trailers, but they got really old and.
These would actually be.
The song.
Yes.
Seasonal.
We've got three, I guess, just.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the deputy?
Yes, is there anything else we can do to help you do the job?
Don't say please, me.
No, the, no, I didn't really, it was honestly really, I really don't understand.
Because we were.
I don't have to contract everything, I actually, I'm sure. I know that office is at the stand, so I talked to Lieutenant Paul, um, he said that it's still, we're still waiting. So it's, it's not hung up at power. So it's not actually hung up outside, you're far from.
Oh, great, any other questions?
Thank you for.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it, all your efforts towards. Oh, great. We're going to do commission committee and group reports, emergency preparedness.
Yes, uh, so we have moved at the National Night Out and had a lot of contact with community members, and that was a really well attended event. Um, and our next meeting, we're meeting the second Tuesday.
Maybe it's the fourteenth.
Excuse me, the second Monday of the month, right? So yes, the fourteenth of August is our next meeting, and we're going to be working with radios. Uh, we're going to see radios, doing the training with, uh, the guys from Army Emergency Communications, who are there at the National Night Out with their trailers. Um, that's at 4:30 here. Yep, and then the following month meeting, we've got one of the regional directors for Red Cross coming to with us. Um, so we've got, yeah, we've got a lot on our.
Um, just to, uh, to, uh, talk about the meeting, I'm working, we're actually moving the fourth, uh, at, um, at four o'clock. Um, where the Stanley Street in Congress is, that's where we're looking at the possible place for another container. Um, and to meet there and go look at the property and see what we can do out there.
I'm sorry, just to do your.
Pollins.
Pollins in Stanley, and there's no street sign, but, but it's just west of, uh, Annesway. And that's what I think that is, and it's kind of like, goes up a hill a little bit, so if you're going east, it was north and left.
Going east.
Um, yeah, and, um, the friend alerted me to a, um, possible grant from the state of Oregon. It's actually from Oregon Agency, let's see, what is it, um, with, uh, Homeland Security. And I've talked to him about it, and I've received information for Kim, is to get a contact. Uh, so that's a possible record we can look into. Excuse me, and I did meet with, um, the, um, security in, security in, security manager, um, Worldmark. Had a really nice meeting with him, um, August the first, uh, August the fourth, and talked to him about the possibility of maybe working together, uh, when we find out what Worldmark has right now, for both locations, indeed, but they haven't even. And there's not a lot of activity, and so I explained to him about our committee, we've been meeting for a couple of months, we're actively pursuing caches. And now we're willing to put material in the cache for emergency, and he was really happy we were doing something like this. And wants to be involved, um, they don't have anything by now in the works, but he does have some availability to look into this and possibly partner with us. For, um, for both locations, so it's, and it's infancy, I mean.
So I understand that Corporation of Worldmark has, um, a granting, has their own granting, so they should be able to, um, you know. Is that thing there? With the, yeah, so they should, first of all, provide their own for their guests, you know, or provide enough money for the city to provide for their.
He wasn't aware of that, because that was the first question I asked, because he's part of the future, well, by Corporation, where surely you have hurricanes, earthquakes, and you have locations and what have you, but he was not aware of any program. Um, he's, um, has, he, he wants to get something together, I'd like to talk about it in our meeting on the fourteenth. He wants to talk to his boss and just say, this is what I'm working at, how, how can we do more of this? Sorry, I'm losing my voice, losing my voice, but, um, anyway, I was very encouraged, and he was, um, there and receptive to it. Happy, yeah.
Mayor, I have a question, yes. It has to do with the caches, uh, there's been a lot of talk about the caches, I noticed, uh, in minutes, uh, in May, that there was a big discussion. What is the status of these caches, do we have, where is it stored? Uh, how much do we have?
We have, um.
I got a.
It's Lexington County, um, we have a matching grant, we have a matching grant of $2,500, and that's $2,500, so we have our first container. And we'll be putting it out here in the parking lot, we're looking at getting another cache for another location that's off of Lawrence. For that side of the, um, for that side of the, the city.
Yeah.
Um, we have lots of information about how to supply it, once we have the caches, we'll go into that procedure, and what is, how to supply.
You mean, once we have the containers?
Yes, right.
And they are ordered?
Yes, one of them, yes.
One, at, at $2,500?
Uh, yeah.
That's what.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Well, $5,000 total.
Pardon me, um, some of the people have mentioned that it's hard to hear you guys, so could you pull your mics closer?
Absolutely.
Make sure your cell phones aren't nearby, it's just a black.
I'm sorry, that helps. I lost my voice, too, I apologize.
You were definitely a soft speaker.
I know, I know, but, um, we're, we're looking at caches, we're looking at supplying the caches, and trying to make some progress with that.
That would seem to me to be the, one of the bellwether projects of this committee, is to get these caches going and in and ready.
Oh, great. Um, Jack, anything from Hydro Restoration Committee?
Uh, yes, there's a, uh, staff will be having a pre-grid construction meeting on 50, uh, two o'clock in the afternoon, and the Harbor Restoration Committee will also meet at the same time to listen to questions. So things are moving on slowly, but then moving.
House Committee, we are still working on ordinance, so pass on that, Harvard, I think we'll pass on that one. Honey, Eric.
Evening.
Evening.
I don't have a lot to report, we have our next meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, but we are working on, I think I mentioned it before, we are working on, uh, I think we're calling it Quality of Life ordinances. Uh, the first of which is to do with nuisance lighting, and then like nuisance noise and everything, so, uh, we've got, I think on our agenda tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, we're gonna, we've already reviewed our potential draft ordinance, and we, I, I had a lot of tweet stuff on it, put in it, and so for lighting specifically, so I think we'll probably have something put together, or cut up here pretty quick, hopefully tomorrow night, for fast, more of you guys, but that's a work in progress, other than that, just standard kind of busy season, so if you're kind of going along.
Any questions, sir? Thank you. We haven't had a meeting for parks in. Kim, did we put together for the seminar enhancement, that meeting, I agree with you?
Um, I got the, I got possible agenda information from the chair, but they gave me before they can find me, find you all that details.
Okay.
Then we'll send it out, we, I currently have three councillors who have committed, and three planning commissioners who have committed to it.
Okay. Okay, so you know, let us know. Okay. I would like to comment.
Look, this level comment just, is just on general items, if, if, if you're here to speak about a specific agenda item, we won't want to wait to that. Otherwise, any might have just had a general comment, it's welcome.
Come on up in the.
Um, I actually probably should have, uh, mentioned this when I was sitting up here 30 seconds ago, but, uh, we couldn't use more planning commissioners, if I'm not mistaken, there's some applications on the table thing in there. So, thank you.
And more parks commissioners, sorry, Eric, I don't see your.
No, that's okay, it's really exciting, I'm planning commissioner, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, for some big things. Okay, Eric. Oh, yes, Mayor.
So, I just wanted to say that I went to the National Night Out, and I had a really good time, I, I guess, did a really great job. And, um, it was a really good event that I hope we continue moving forward with.
Yeah.
Nice. One of my two cents.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
I mean, I'm candy.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, me.
Okay, so moving on, um, we've moved up under new business, the depot bay, um, salmon bake. Uh, and then we'll follow that with the Chamber of Commerce, the City Parks Event, and the Community Hall reservation. So, Val, do you want to open up the conversation?
Sure, and I'm just the messenger, I just try to listen to what folks have to say, and I know a lot of people wanted to continue with the conversation about the salmon bake, so. The past two or three salmon bakes were canceled at the last minute, this week before on the event dates. Local folks have been really disappointed by what's happened to one of their favorite local nests in the past few years. While I agree with some of you that the city should not be in the business of putting on a fence, except in special instances like the awesome recent two 50th anniversary and the night out. I, I don't believe we might want to, I do believe that we might want to consider stepping in to help facilitate the event moving on to its next coordinating group. There's also been a lot of recent controversy about, about the event, with that, have some sort of, have come some really awesome ideas. One of those ideas is moving forward, and you're going to hear more about it tonight. Um, for now, I'd like to see the city work with the chamber to relocate any of the items needed to put on the event, and they would also need to help coordinate the transfer of the ownership of the event at that mission. That's really all I have, I don't want to. I think we'll do with that next.
I'll open it up for discussion, those councillors, do you have questions for Kelly? If there was a motion in there, it would just be to have Kimberly work with, Kimberly and Brady, uh, work with the chamber.
Right, because.
Just to make sure it's a.
The city doesn't transition.
Right, the city doesn't, um, we don't oversee the chamber, we don't find any of that, but we have this put in here, but we don't know anything.
So it would be whatever the chamber is willing to do.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I, I read, uh, the proposal by the chamber, I think that's just fine, I, I'm very supportive of any organization that wants to come in and could do good deeds and and bring more, good notoriety to our city. But, uh, I, I'm missing the point here, what is the city's role in this? What is being proposed here? That we are somehow at the interim for the salmon bake, or?
That was what we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
Well, I've attended all meetings.
Okay.
Uh, that I, uh, I, I remember talking about this in fact, and just saying this, that we should, as a city council, be supportive of any organization that does this, but we shouldn't be involved in mechanics. But if this gets us involved in those mechanics, then I think it's. Yeah, I missed.
My, my proposal that Kim and I work on something to bring to the city council, just to, I do assist it, I think it will work for a week. Yeah, yes, so I'm, I'm really not understanding either, so this would be that, um, it seems to be moving in the direction that I don't know, that the city was going to take over the salmon bake, and I wasn't really, um.
No. We never.
No, we didn't, so, I'm, maybe we should hear from everybody that's here tonight. Right, about this. On the agenda. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm actually not sure really what, what, or Mayor, what you or Kim would do.
Yeah, all four of these little things all kind of go together, so if you want, I'll move on to the next one. Sorry, um, my apologies to those of you who just, so Carla very generously took key to these items and created a sign up sheet for some of the people who want to speak, so in this particular issue, we have two people that want to speak, I have Mary. And you.
Are you, right?
Mueller, M U L E R. I'm so sorry, Mary Mueller's first, and then Shu Lei would be second.
And I'm going to hold up at this time.
Okay, do you know, you just don't want to speak at all right now?
Right now.
Okay. Alright, how about?
Can I ask a quick question? For those that came in late and didn't know about the sign up sheet.
Oh, yeah.
Like, someone that might want to speak about it, is that too late for them to speak about it, or?
No, absolutely not, so if this is about this particular issue, then when, when we get everybody who's signed up, we can see who's voting today.
Okay, does Shu Lei would like to speak about this issue?
I have a question. So were you being your own words, or somebody else's?
I just wrote down the votes.
Oh, okay.
Now that we are on this subject, it seems to me that what we did was we said, look, we'll supply the community hall for these groups, the Chamber of Commerce, the Friends of Depot Bay, and whoever else wants to get together to figure this out, no big deal, we've already committed ourselves on this, disappointed us, why are we revisiting this?
You have a conflict of uses for the date right now, so that's part of it. You have more than one entity that wants the same community hall apart for this year.
Yeah, and the next thing was to rescind the, the previous request to use the park for a salmon bake, because it's not being used for a salmon bake. And, you know, I, I suppose since, I think the, maybe those two issues could be tied together, the depot bay salmon bake and this particular issue, we can tie those together.
Right.
And then address the other two separately, is that workable?
That's what I.
Okay, so we could do that, um, Shu Lei?
Well, just to carry up, up.
Come on up. Is it whis, whis news?
Whiz news.
Whiz news, it was Z, Z, and then.
Thank you. Well, just to go off of what Rick was saying, um, at the last meeting that I attended, which I can't remember the exact date, I think. Um, anyway, it was in July, uh, it was proposed, and the city council graciously offered for community members to be able to use the community hall, to get together to try to discuss our concerns and our passions in regard to our traditional events. Um, that permission was granted to the depot bay Chamber of Commerce to set that up, and I have not heard anything, and, um, so I know nobody's ever told me anything about that, but I am involved with a lot of people that do care about this event, and would like to see a new 501(c)(3) be able to maybe form as a group, um, so people can be put into positions by other people who have voted them there, and everybody collaborates together as a team, um, to create, uh, that, which I will talk about more later on. And I just want to express concern that a lot of people do really want salmon bake and other events to be a part of our community and run by an organization with transparency and accountability, thank you.
Thank you, Shu Lei. Okay, um, we, we do have one more person who'd like to speak on this issue.
Oh, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
She's going to combine the both, correct? You bet.
Sorry, really shocked that we're doing this again for a short time, I'm perfectly honest with you. The chamber has not once said that 2024 doesn't happen. In fact, I've even reached out personally to, we're just trying to talk about meeting together so that we can see what we can do in the future. We haven't made any statement of that, we have every intention of the salmon bake continuing, it's just not this year, because of many reasons. I'm not putting it all on volunteers, I'm not putting it all on salmon, there's a conglomerate of things that have to work together in order for it to happen.
What I don't understand is, I want you to picture this, okay, I'm planning my grandma's hundredth birthday. My grandma passes away, I decide to change the event to her celebration, you're gonna tell me I can't continue to use the park? Because that's basically what you're saying. I, my job is to bring commerce to this community, it's my job to support my businesses. So, we've created a new event that I can successfully pull off in this amount of time. It doesn't require a ton of volunteers, it's open to every Chamber in the county, so I have already connected with Dallas, Baltimore, Lincoln City, Newport, and Deepo Bay. Any Chamber of Business is welcome to set up a table or a meeting at no cost. There is going to be entertainment, and with food ticket price, we have local restaurants that are gonna serve fish and chips. Those are gonna come with it, it's gonna serve our mission of keeping local seafood local and promoting sustainability. I would love for you to have a disaster preparedness group, whatever you want to have. But it is all about bringing people here and showcasing what a commerce is, which is bringing business here, that is my job. So, I, I'm required in my scope of work, I've, we have not, I have no understanding whatsoever why this would even change, we've paid for attendance already, we spent over two thousand dollars on marketing, right? And some of it I can't change, some of it's already been printed as Salmon Bake, which just means I have to be creative in our messaging online. We have not, to date, sold one ticket, despite what I've been accused of, which by the way, I've been harassed, my family's been harassed, I've had death threats, my friends have had threats, my three employers have had threats, but I'm still here, I'm not going anywhere, because what I do is a damn good job. I'm extremely passionate about taking care of these businesses, and I'm not gonna stop. I'm so past the point of the harassment, defamation, and everything, not if, but that's not the point. The point is, I have an event that unfortunately this year only is gonna take place on Salmon Bake Day. It'll never take place in September again, it is replacing it, because people were already planning to.
And I just learned about it today.
Right, because I haven't made any announcements, because I just learned that it's being considered to take away our ability to use the park, where it's being considered that other people can take and invest that isn't theirs. Do I want to work with everybody? In fact, surely do, but the, the Salmon Bake is the Chamber's. It's always been the Chamber's, the Chamber has no desire to make it go away forever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we'll move on to, we'll discuss, um, item four, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce thing going forward with the proposed debate. Um, do you want to introduce that?
I guess what I need to know is if the Chamber is staying both the park and the community hall on that day.
I don't think, I need to be held, I'm not positive.
Okay, so that was the basic comment.
Yeah, two people that want at the same facility, on the same day. It's gonna depend on, so I'm working with the group that came that wanted to bring artists to our area, and they may want to use that for art.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Uh, Melissa, I want to thank you for coming tonight, and I want to thank everybody for being here, it's, uh, it's really good to see you all participating in government. And, uh, I was, uh, really happy to see you throw up the Salmon Bake, and I'm glad to hear you saying that, uh, you intend to hold it next year, and I think it's probably a good idea, you know, that we all just, you know, uh, put this in abeyance for a little bit. Uh, the brand of the Salmon Bake will withstand being shut down for a year or two, it's a very strong brand. And, uh, when you're prepared to do it again, and give yourself some lead-in time, and you're gonna be rebuilding from COVID and, uh, renewing volunteers and finding new people, it's, it's a big job. And, uh, I would just as soon see a really good, well-put-together Salmon Bake, uh, down the road than, uh, some kind of hasty, uh, event that, uh, really doesn't live up to the, the name. Uh, but, and, and as far as getting threats and, and, uh, some of this stuff, Deepo Bay is notorious for having a, an abrasive side to it. Somehow we all end up loving one another.
I have the death threats, my husband's work, he's...
Well, that's just, that's just...
So, is, is this a city council discussion, not directly have, the association, you can talk to each other? So, is there further discussion on this issue? We need to, we need to decide if we're going to allow the Chamber to continue with their plans.
If I make a motion that we allow the Chamber to continue with their plans?
A, a motion, is it needed to be made to allow them to continue because they already have yet to, to, to respect?
So, they already have the community hall and the, uh... So, um, that's fine, uh, but it sounds like there needs to be clarification of, um, that that can happen later as soon as, um, Chamber knows, if they'll also use the community center. So, um, if not, that could be freed up, but they already have it right now, right? So, we're going forward with the Chamber's event, okay, um, city event reservation request?
Okay, this one is, um, this, this new... You're done.
Hello, and thank you again for asking that. My name is Shulei Waznisky, and I am a Fulton resident at one one five North East Lane Street, and I need only just a few minutes of your time. And at times, my passion does well up in liquid form, and I, I leave. Growing up in Deepo Bay gave me a firsthand experience with living out steward leadership. I would not be the medical, social worker I am today without positive examples from so many of our elders who have passed away. Today, I'm unable to sit in this room and not speak about a couple people, um, one of which is Jerry Decker, as his example was strong in the fellowship and drawing activities at the park. And after Jerry Decker passed away, I did take over planning and execution of the school's outfitment, which ran on donations and volunteers that are focused on children and families until two thousand six. And now I just want to mention, uh, Richard Cotton, he's one of the nicest, most humble people that I've ever met, besides my husband Drew Waznisky. And he would just always show up at the end of our events with a cooler of ice cream, and it's a gift to have been taught by such giving individuals. Today, I'm approaching the council with other concerned citizens, um, if you're pleased in the room, please raise your hands. If you're listening via telecommunications, could you please say aye?
I'm sorry, they cannot, because I muted them though.
Okay.
Because of the feedback.
Fair enough. We request time to use the park on Saturday, September ninth, to bring community together, to have a picnic, to get to know each other, play yard games, and towards the end, interested individuals will have time to collaborate regarding events. Our town has come to know and love its traditions, the wooden boat show, the crab beat, pleat of flowers, and the Deepo Bay Salmon Bake, and others forgotten or not yet thought of events. I've been collaborating with over fifty of our community members who would like to be involved in the new five oh one(c)(3) that uses a mission statement, somewhat like the following. Our mission is to serve our community through transparency and accountability by welcoming everyone. We engage the public and private sector by providing networking opportunities, economic development, research, education, and resources. We will foster a pro-business climate for economic prosperity to improve the quality of life for businesses and residents through maintaining traditions and developing and implementing new ideas as we work towards a positive future for our community. Yesterday, I spoke to Lynn Johnson, the administrative assistant at the Deepo Bay Fire Hall, to leave a message regarding requesting permission to have a small fire area for cooking at this event on the side of the city park where we would normally hold the Salmon Bake. Lynn took down my information, and I told her that I will report, uh, your decision, uh, to her after tonight's meeting. We are waiting to hear your decision before we choose to approach any other people for, um, any type of donations. And I want to thank you for your time and consideration of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Shulei?
What page is that application on?
There, for the, for the one? In the second act, I think. Page thirty-three.
So, I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so, the next people on the agenda, the Friends of Deepo Bay are already in five oh one(c)(3), how is your mission different than, uh, their mission?
Well...
How was mission, I mean?
We are still just in the growing process, so it's, we haven't been able to get together yet as a group. Um, we've just been collaborating via, Kim, talking to each other, um, and I've been sharing information with people via direct messages, and I've also been collaborating with people over emails.
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah.
Yes, you're right.
So, um, starting a five oh one(c)(3) and maintaining a five oh one(c)(3), um, isn't a, isn't a small deal, so... Um, anyway, just that's just would be a consideration in working with an existing five oh one(c)(3). But, um, Mayor, I don't have any, um, problem with, uh, allowing a city park, because I do have a problem, um, unless we get some reins having a fire.
Yeah, questioning a fire.
So, um, I would be okay with allowing a city park event, provided that there's, um, good fire.
Okay. Would you want just like a potluck type of thing?
Well, it was more like a potluck picnic, but then we did decide, well, maybe, it might be okay to, uh, have a small fire for like schmores or people that want to like roast tacos. And so, uh, that's why I approached, um, the city park marshal, and at this time, there is no burn ban on small fires such as that, that's the result of my...
We are facing a threat. We are facing a threat.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, that piece, uh, would have to be canceled, the burn ban is in place, yeah.
Was there someone else speaking in favor of this event?
No, there was just the one person signed up, I'm checking online real quick, I'm kind of just voiceless. And nobody, um, has signed up to speak.
Um, online? Is there a motion to accept Shulei's reservations for September ninth, uh, what time is this, Shulei?
Well, we hadn't come up with a time, because we really want to know that we have a park to be able to have an event, right? So, but, um, I, I know it wouldn't be the whole entire day, um, but I am just working with a group of people, we can't pick a time if we don't have a park, right?
So, we all need to know the time to have it.
Oh, okay, so, it would probably be afternoon to early evening at the latest. Uh, I want to let people who do work on Saturday to be able to have time to join the park where they might want to be able to collaborate about the five oh one(c)(3) and...
If you can be more specific, if she's, if it's a five or four, just the rule?
Two to four.
Have it in our notes.
Oh, okay, so like, no more than from eleven to six, could we say that?
Including the takeout and sit-down?
Yeah. Because I need time, things in place, there's gonna be yard games, yeah.
You just took a premise that's only a vote to allow the event, has nothing to do with the student, or the nonprofit.
Yeah.
No.
I just want you to know the agenda of what will be happening. Okay, is there a motion to approve her application?
Um, with the provision that there's no open flyers.
Okay. You still have one?
I still have one.
Okay, is there a second?
There's one.
Okay, it's been moved to the second, and for, uh, Shulei, I'm gonna say the last name, I'm sorry. Uh, do you see city park from eleven to six on September ninth? Two thousand and three, any further discussion on the motion? On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you've got the park.
Thank you.
But no fires?
Fair enough.
Okay.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm listening, you know, if there's, uh, if you're going to do a sports, uh, or need some steps, of course, you don't talk about it. But that was the answer.
Thank you.
And, uh, letter of the House.
All right, thank you. Um, community hall reservation request, Friends of Deepo Bay?
Hello, uh, my name's Bruce Trent, and I am the president of Friends of Deepo Bay, we are a five oh one(c)(3) organization uh, that are coming together in an attempt to provide, uh, citizen support to the citizens of Deepo Bay and surrounding community, communities. Uh, we are not, as I spoke the last time, we are not, uh, trying to tread on Chamber of Commerce and local business profit. I care more about the employees of the local businesses than I do about the out-of-town business owners that are mostly populated in Deepo Bay. Um, I am going to withdraw my request, uh, for the sixteenth, as it was my understanding that the Chamber of Commerce was relinquishing all rights and reservations, and that I was being asked that we be able to step in instead, and receive the same support that would have been provided today, since it's, that's obviously not true, uh, per Melissa. Uh, we will look to move our event, uh, potentially up to the twenty-third or some other time. Uh, yeah, because it's become abundantly apparent to Friends of Deepo Bay that one of the things that the local community did enjoy were events like National Night Out, with the chance to come together, that they enjoyed watching salmon being fried or raw fired, that they enjoyed coleslaw, that they enjoyed bread and the camaraderie of the community. Mo's, um, childhood house in Lincoln City has graciously volunteered to donate food and services for Up Through the Hundred, which is about what I would have expected, uh, from the local community to attend such a, a, an event, maybe National Night Out, if there was any numbers that were given there would help refine anything that we want to do in the future. But it's not just Salmon Bake, I have no interest in taking over the Salmon Bake, I have no interest in any of that kind of stuff. I, we're gonna put on a Thanksgiving meal for the residents, uh, we already have the community hall reserved for that. We're gonna look to do things like a free pancake breakfast for veterans on Veterans Day. Uh, we're really here to support the, the residents. If somebody needs their yard cleaned out, they can't cut down the blackberries because they're too old, too much, that's what we want to stick up and do, and that's the whole idea and concept behind Friends of Deepo Bay.
Any questions for, for?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I gotta tell you, I just, uh, I was, I was sitting here going like, I, I, I don't quite understand why we, we have a one point four million dollar payroll, we have projects that works, and I'm anxious to get on to those, but then it just hit me that tonight, we had something happen here that I think was very nice, and, uh, Melissa from the Chamber, Shulei, and Brent, all three great people have come in and figured this out, it sounds to me. And, and, and suddenly we have these great events to look forward to, so congratulations to all of you, thank you, I consider you all, we consider you all friends.
Thank you, Dan. No, go ahead.
So, I have a question about, are you, um, proposing to, um, change the date on your application to nine twenty-three?
I am going to look at that, obviously, I don't know whether the... Obviously, I don't know whether the facility is available. I require more time than one day. So I need setup, prep, carry-on. And I don't know whether it's available during those days. I was looking at dates when I submitted this, that I felt the Chamber probably that are already reserved. Yes, the twenty-third appears to be very busy. And September thirtieth is the weekend. It'll close. So I doubt that we're talking about anything that we're going to be able to do other than potentially offer those people that come to our Thanksgiving feast some salmon.
So what I understand is you're requiring the application.
Right, yeah.
So.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yes.
Could you tell me about your Thanksgiving feast? I haven't, I haven't mentioned about it.
What's that?
Your Thanksgiving feast.
Okay, well, we reserve the halls under the 501(c)(3) and pay the nonprofit fee for Thanksgiving weekend. And we do, we cook turkeys and it's kind of a mix between prepared foods, the larger things like turkeys and hands and stuff, and then potluck as well.
Do you sign people up or how do they know about it?
Well, it's been, it's been an ongoing event for several years, but it's been by the private citizen as opposed to underneath the auspices of the chair.
Yes, how, how's your group then together?
My, my 501(c)(3) is really a fledgling organization. It was founded in twenty-twenty-two, the last part of twenty-twenty-two. Business registry has been provided to the council as well as the EIN. It is not the last time, I mean, if we found a weekend, I was kind of surprised, and maybe it's just because it got all confused, that Shulay had to come to the front door, a calendar entry to rent the park. It's not a normal thing. That's, that's an administrative function that occurs without council intervention as long as there's no alcohol being served, is part of the note. Yet tonight, we were out discussing and voting and motioning and.
Go ahead. It, it's actually part of the rules that it involves with shutting down the park to our organization, and the council makes that call.
Oh, if it has, but if you just say, I want to use the park, which is on your application form, and I mean, even the salmon bait never said you couldn't come play on the swing sets since the, the park has never been shut down for even the salmon.
It's not shut, it's open to anybody who should. But the group was designated the entire park for use.
I, I get you, I'm just saying that should, should my organization decide to come back and reserve the community center in the future, I would be surprised if we couldn't do that through an administrative process with the proper holder side, who decided to serve liquor and all that good kind of stuff. Otherwise, I think it's. So I just wanted to take the opportunity, even though it doesn't look like the sixteenth won't work, to let the council know that there is a new 501(c)(3) town. And we intend to sound our horn and help the people and do some tests.
Wonderful. Sign me up for it.
Yes, thank you.
Was there anyone else that wanted to speak on this?
I'm sorry, I just wanted my staff to bring that paying attention. Thank you, staff. The, the park use, normally we charge for the use of it?
Yes.
So is that what this is, I don't know if it is. Either that or if one way to say, or if they're saying overall needs of porn, the whole thing's not up. So it's really about, which is.
Oh, for a Shulay's? Oh, yeah, there is a fish Shulay's.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're fine.
I was following your.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's about getting to community. We can get, get back to you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. We're doing that, okay, let's go back to unfinished business. We'll start with the first reading of the Harbor Ordinance Amendment, Ordinance Number 34023. And so this is an ordinance replacing, repealing or replacing ordinance number 252, Chapter ninety-two, City of Deco Bay Harbor Ordinance. And I think we all have a chance to read this, so at this time, I'll open nominations or motions to record this ordinance in title only.
We have a bunch of people that want to speak to this ordinance.
I know.
Okay.
But in title only, then we open after public hearing?
Usually it's the public one.
Okay, whatever, we'll open for public hearing.
It's not public hearing.
Oh, with the public comments, okay.
Okay, and you've got a list there. I do. First up is Jack O'Brant.
Good evening. City Council.
Hi, Chair.
I, I'm a member of the Harbor Commission. My opening remarks tonight are my own thoughts on the recent Harbor discussions. They do not at this time represent input from the Harbor Commission to the board. You have a copy of this in your packet, however, what you want to read is not what you want to hear when they're changing. From the beginning, the docks in the harbor were built to support commercial charter fishing based in Deco Bay. During their heyday in the sixties to the nineties, there were many more charter fishing and commercial boats in the harbor than there are now. Today, efficient to the recognition of laws, the use of the harbor docks continues as the base for charter fishing, whale watching and commercial operations. Admittedly, for some time now, the harbor regulations have neither been properly enforced or updated to keep up with the needs and reality of the harbor operation in Deco Bay. Failure to do so related to both the city of Deco Bay and the Harbor Commission being passed. The current Harbor Commission has spent a lot of time and effort from the council and the city staff to bring the operations of the harbor to the twenty-first century. We recognize that harbor needs to pull more of its own weight and bring more money into the city population. Toward this end, there are a number of items at issue such as basic mortgage, break cash collection, dock storage and so forth, which needs updating, changing or revising. However, I and others believe the implementation, implementing significant changes to harbor operations should not be done on once over a very short period of time. Any changes should be incremental, culminating no later than the completion of our new docks in twenty-twenty-five. I intend that the Harbor Commission will continue working for city staff and will work for charter companies and boat captains over the next few months to come up with recommendations to decrease the harbor's dependency on the city funds. While it is important that all involved recognize the final decision of the harbor operation rests with the city council. It has been my experience and past that well-thought-out, coordinated, realistic plan, which achieves the goal, is more likely to be workable and acceptable to all parties involved. Not anyone, not everyone may be happy with the result, but being realistic and recognizing and accepting the need for change is necessary for Deco Bay Harbor operations to succeed for the next federal decade. Regardless of what is done, I think it's unlikely a harbor the size of Deco Bay will ever be fully self-supported, simply not enough over my heart to do that. That concludes my first remarks that I have on that. I do have other comments on the regulation. So, first comment I have is on page nine. Item three. It states, no tools, equipment, parts or materials shall be placed on the public dock or other public space. A concern I have on this particular item is that when someone is working on a boat, whatever, they need to be able to bring their stuff down on the dock and put it there and then, okay, take it in, you know, bring it on board. In M and A D, they take their tools and they put them in. I think the way this reads, you can't bring anything down there and land on the dock beside your vessel and then continue, keep bringing it down and then until you're ready to get all your tools and everything, then you're ready to work. I, I think that that's too restrictive. The statement should be that, that they won't be left there. Whereas, I think it needs to be changed to be a little bit more flexible for people. I don't, I'm saying they, they should be leaving tools and equipment on the dock, that's not, that's what I'm saying. Just saying this is, this is no, can't do that.
Can I, can I just, because you're talking about the park that was in red that was added, right?
Well, I'm not, I'm talking about the.
It's in the red, right?
It says, no tools, on the public dock or other public space, period.
Let me just address what that is, just so you guys all know. So during the work session, no, no decisions, no, no, no specific motions were made. However, the council concurred with a number of items that were what Harbor Commission has presented and other items. Items that are in here, that are in red, have not been adopted. They have not gone anywhere beyond that they need to be decided about. That was why that's showing in red, because there hasn't been a definitive answer on those items. So I just want to make sure everybody kind of knows that, because I, I think by doing this, I kind of muddied the water a little bit, so I had people thinking that that meant that this was approved, but that's not what happened. This is still open for discussion.
I understand that, and that's why.
Right, I just wanted to.
Thank you for your comments, yeah.
Especially the council.
The next one is on the same page, page nine, which states right now that storage boxes and crab pots are not allowed to be stored on the docks. Again, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, it has the premature to just shut it down right now. That there is time enough to do it properly and find a way to, to operate, store the, store the crab pots and so people can operate and so the docks are safe. Let's see. In J two, no other personal property will be allowed on the public docks. Oh, and then, okay, I see what we're doing on this one. And that again should be, why they took it out of the harbor matches discretion. Think I understand that. The Harbor Master has to follow the rules and regulations of the harbor and set down by the city council. On J two, later further on, it says, pay to the city a fee set by resolution of the council. Previously, it was fifty dollars, a fee of fifty dollars. And then we proposed basically to a hundred dollars. And my question is, why not set a fee fee?
I'm sorry, Chair, fee is for what?
The fee for, if the city, if they fail to remove.
Okay, all right, right.
Then they got to pay a fee or a fine, what they want to, or do it. And it should, I think it should be clearly stated how much that fine would be. That's why a third of the people who go against that particular condition.
That was added to the movement rates and fees that the normal resolution, those, there's two items here. Staff discuss whether or not we want to just, because it makes it when you want to change your fee, you have to go through this whole process of changing ordinance. But you can change a resolution just by a quick change. So we said, well, let's pull all this fees out, just put it in the resolution, which can be updated annually or whenever, but if you're not updating the ordinance, that's why we need that. We, we moved to two items.
Yeah, but if you, if you're, if, if there is a, all right, could you say that, uh, let's see, set by resolution of the council by not less than, under all, or something like that? Fee shall be not less than?
What we can do is make sure that when you send out the renewal letter, that they get the fee resolution that shows how much fee change would cost them if they do that. I mean, whatever the council wishes, if the council wishes to put that back in there, we're happy to do it, but employee staff talk about taking that.
Okay.
Just makes it easier to update in the future.
All right. My next comment is on petition one. It used to be a petition for hardship, payment of the fees, the fees to recharge, was filed with the Harbor Commission. And this has been changed to say, a proposed change filed with the city council. I guess I don't understand why that, why that change is necessary. The Harbor Commission in passing has looked at these hardship cases and has dealt with it. And, and basically what we do is make a recommendation, as always, to the city council, that they waive or whatever the hardship. So that, my concern is that I think the Harbor Commission should still be the point of contact on the mortgage over. That. That closes my remarks. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. And I should have let everybody know that the public comment, and even though we're speaking to agenda, I am really supposed to be limited to five minutes. No, that's good. I should tell everybody. No, I mean.
I wanted to speak about a few different things. First of all, the items that are proposed or changed on these new ordinances, I feel like these are really drastic changes that require a little bit more. What I'd like to see is the community members and the people that need directly affect to be able to come together and have workshops to discuss those papers, because these are decisions that make huge financial impacts on so many people's lives in the harbor. Deco Bay's a working harbor and taking away things like being able to store crab pots and things like that. I understand the city's stance of, you know, safety in those things, those are super important, I agree with you. And I feel like there should be discussion on how we can make those things better. But there needs to be proof of discussion involving everybody that has input. I understand a work session was held where public input really wasn't allowed during that part. And it's super important to make the decisions based on, you know, the harbor itself. You know, I want to go back to the comprehensive plan for the, for the city of Deco Bay. One of the main goals is to enhance the economic growth of the city while preserving natural resources inherent that make Deco Bay the unique community that it is, to allow commercial, enlighten those who are broke and encourage continuance of the existing commercial and charter fishing industry. Eighty percent of our charter trips that we, that we do, do well crabbing. Something as simple as taking away crab pots, being able to sport, being, being able to be stored on the docks would be a huge detrimental financial impact in our, in our industry. And something that makes that have an impact on so many people's lives needs to be discussed and, and, you know, with the opportunity for everybody to come up with the opportunity for everybody to come up and voice their concerns and maybe come up with a plan. Because I do agree that safety is a, a key factor here. We want everybody to be safe on the docks. We should take some time and visit this and not make any rash decisions when it comes to huge decisions like this. That is going to impact so many people's lives. No matter how we look at it, the, the charter industry here, however you feel about tourists in our community or anything like that, they're incredibly important. People come here to go fishing, to enjoy scenery, to enjoy restaurants. And they fill the beds, that, that you receive your, you know, funds from the TRT tax that comes from filling those beds. We rely on these people for this city, you know, they're a two-part story. And I just ask the city council to maybe take a few steps back and just allow some time, workshops where you allow the input from the people that these are directly impacting to come and talk about their concerns and work through a compromise to where we can come up with solutions that would, um, maybe ease your concerns about safety on the docks. And also be able to not make such a huge financial impact on our charter business. Most of our fishermen go crabbing, that's just the way it is. And for us to, the, the expectation for us to be able to have to, I'm not, I'm not even sure what, what your, what would be proposed, but haul crab pots up and down those ramps. If we're talking about liability on a boat time trying to haul crab pots down a steep ramp, I don't see how that, I, I feel like that's counterproductive. I think there's got to be a way that we can all come together and come up with a solution that makes everybody happy and feel comfortable. But that can't be made quickly, that can't be made rashly. I think we need to give it some time, do some workshops, break the community together and come up with a solution that works for everybody. Because in the long run, that's going to be the best for Deport Bay and, and our economy. It'll be economy and our program, so I'd like to use that.
B R A.
Yeah, I'm good on that.
No? Okay. Was it Bruce? Oh, I'm sorry. Lydia, I've got this name as well, Jay, Jared. Chad.
I think new folks all on me and everything. I just wanted to make a couple comments. You know, pretty much what Noni said, uh, she couldn't be more correct. Um, I just wanted to let you all know that our board insurance also covers stuff that's on the docks. So it's not a city responsibility as much to it is the board's responsibility. Make sure there's no liability or anything. It's a, it's, it's a huge detriment to us to have to haul those pots anyplace but pretty much on the docks. It's, uh, it's going to create more reliability trying to haul the pots on and off the docks with the public on the docks and everything than, than it would just sit there. Um, there was a suggestion that using the old Troller's Lodge, which over there, but in the picture, just off the picture right there. And I mean, that would just be a huge expense on the city, you know? I mean, we have time, so the dock we have to be put in, um, you know, we're talking probably another million dollars to, to have a dock that, that is usable to be able to store our pots. We talked about it at length in the harbor commission. And, uh, there's many solutions for the, for the issue. I ain't even suggested, but even storage lockers, you know, something that's uniformed. Everybody has the same size locker. I, uh, made some amendments on the pots, most of the pots are about thirty inches. So the locker would only have to be about forty, forty inches wide just to allow for a little more space. And that covers up the pots and everything. They would be a square, as long as everybody has the same, same storage locker. It would look good for the harbor. Um, this is one of the reasons why we wanted to see the, the piling go down the middle of the docks. Nobody ever walks in the middle of the docks. So, you know, where the, where the crab pots are stored, nobody's ever in those, those areas. That's where the pilings are. So that was one of the big issues, why we wanted to see the pilings that go over the dock here for the restoration. And that's about it. And I just wanted to voice our concern that, like Noni said, I mean, we're talking a huge, huge part of our business, trapping. I would say probably eighty percent of our trips are, it involves bottom fishing. The folks want to crab also. And it's just physically impossible to have to store the pots on our boats, you know? Then we turn around to the wildlife. You know, and it would be physically impossible to be hauling pots up and down the gangways and, you know, all that. So it would just ultimately create more liability, you know, in the parking lot and everyone, so. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up.
Anybody got any questions? All right, thank you.
James Peterson?
I'm James Peterson. I want to operate the turbo stands in Deport Bay. And I just wanted to, uh, deal a lot of what Chad and what Noni said. Um, but I just want to kind of reiterate also from my perspective. I can totally understand why safety is an issue and should be the forefront of everybody's thinking. But at the same time, do not, uh, get the perspective of what we're trying to accomplish here by taking all the crab pots away. This is kind of counterproductive, which has, I talked about already, but, uh, I don't see why, how you're gaining any, anything by taking all those crab pots off the dock. So you, it'd create more of a safety issue, uh, with all the deckhands and the, and the charter captains hauling crab pots down the dock in the dark. You have lots of accidents right away by having that issue right off the bat. And I've, have not seen any sort of issue with any crab pots on the dock. Up until this point, I've heard of as far as people tripping over crab pots, like tabs touching on. They're right in the middle of the dock or they're out of the way. There's like the walk on either side of the pilings down the dock, which is a clear avenue to get to all boats in the way or down the docks. What is an issue and is an ongoing process, obviously, is the docks themselves. Uh, and it's processes, obviously, and it works to fix. But there's more tripping hazards from boars than uneven. There's more tripping hazards from cords, from leaks. But all these things that are on the docks are necessities that you have to have to be able to run a boat, uh, to be able to tie up a boat. It's things that are required to be there. And in a lot of those ways, those crab pots are required for us to be able to operate our business, to be able to, uh, get customers to keep coming back, um, what we do every day. It's something that we, um, something that keeps our business going. And, uh, if you take that, um, take that away from us, that makes our, every day that much more difficult. And also, um, like I say, it makes it more of a safety issue for us every day. I also feel like, uh, it is something that needs to be brought forth to have more public input from, uh, charter boat skippers and people that are on the docks every day, um, using these docks every day, walking down them every day, um, to be able to have a workshop where everybody's, has more of a voice to be able to discuss these issues. And there should be, uh, consensus amongst everybody to be able to find a common goal we're going to reach instead of just making that decision right off the bat without any input with whole, whole town that's involved and people that are involved with, uh, docks every day, which are turbo captains and people running boats.
Thank you. You guys want to go together?
All right, that would be great.
Okay. I'm assuming the council is okay.
Absolutely.
I mean, you talk from here too, it's like.
Uh, no, whatever. Is the microphone mostly, that's all? There's still people on the line.
Um, I just submitted a letter about four o'clock this afternoon. Basically, uh, hearing what a lot of people in here are saying is that we, um, we appreciate that there needs to be change, because that's what happens, you know? That as cities grow, towns grow, things need to change. And, um, that's completely fine. But we would really love the opportunity to sit down and, and talk to everybody about it. And so we can come up with reasonable solutions to ensure that all of the visual industry is safe, the public is safe, and that the city is satisfied that all of those safety conditions are met. We, I could go on about all these crab pot issues and that, that is one of the issues. We obviously don't want to see crab pots shoulder for the docks. But we're completely available to trying to create, come up with some creative ways to keep them out of the way. We can definitely keep other stuff off the docks. That's, you know, all the things that, that's very, you know, that's something very practical and pleasingly to do. But there's so many different issues and so many different ways that it affects us that, you know, we all, we all want to take up fifty thousand people here, a public comment in five minutes that, you know, multiples the compliment. We'd love to sit down and talk to you guys and say, you know, okay, what are your ideas? What are our ideas? How we, like, good happening in between, we're, we're all happy with the solution. Um, you know, the, the harbors, it's harbor people, okay? We're whale watching, after the world, people come here to go on boats, go catch fish, watch meals, to eat at really good restaurants, to go check out good shops, to stay at Walmart, to stay at these nice hotels. And we want to keep promoting that because we have an awesome city here. And we need to keep making sure that we can bring people here, and it's crazy for just three months out of the year, but the rest of the time, the rest of us in here can actually enjoy the life. But, um, you know, I, I just think that there's, it, it would be best if we could all, I mean, and not just the charter companies, you know? There's, like, what, there are children, eighty, a hundred, and all more children. Invite them to come and talk, talk, maybe keep their crab pots and their stuff off the docks too. And how we can just keep things a little bit more organized and orderly for all of us, um, for everybody in this town, for people that visit this town, to keep using the harbor as we use and as we use it as a, you know? It's, it's a working harbor, but we can certainly clean it up, make it look and feel and be a little bit more presentable, but also in ways that don't completely infringe on our businesses or any practices during the season, so.
Yeah, I think that's it, awesome. We can table this issue and how we're trapped, maybe in September, October, that would be for, so we're looking for.
Deport. Thank you for coming today. Okay, that is, um, let me check, uh, is there anybody online who wishes to speak? Hold your hand up or chat, let me know. At this point, I'm not seeing anybody interested. No. So, nope, that was it.
Are the microphones unmuted?
Uh, no, but they can unmute.
They can unmute.
I told him I would also let him know, I can chat. Uh, sorry, I didn't say I wanted to bring it. Did you want to speak as well?
I did, I just wanted to. So I'm pretty fortunate, I get stats from Travel Org and Organ Coast Visitor Association and of course our own website. And I can tell you that seventy-three percent from Travel Org when they look at Deport Bay, specifically look up fishing and crabbing and whale watching. On Organ Coast Visitor Association, ninety-one percent when they look at Deport Bay, specifically look up fishing and crabbing and whale watching. And our website site visitors are sixty-nine percent. And they look that up, and I can tell you I get hundreds of phone calls a week that ask, would I go whale watching, can I fish and crab? I think that we just need to click them on. I know tourism is a subject that everybody's excited about, but it's important to them when they come. If we lose that piece, Deport Bay will become an absolute challenge. We can't afford for it to become an absolute challenge. I just want to consider those stats that are like, well, I'm happy to share, I guess, for people.
Thank you. And anybody else trying to pass class? So that's, uh, so that's anyone. Okay, so then we'll close the, um, public comments portion of it, public hearing portion of this. Public comments. And so now we'll do the first reading, last thing. I need to entertain a motion to read right by link, yes, please. The other motion should be. Or this number four of this. Three, four, oh. To read by time. Or this, three, four, oh, dash two, three, by Tyler. Is there a second? I'll, I'll stick it up. Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Uh, I have a question. Given the public comment tonight with regard to.
This is the motion to read by Tyler only. We'll go into discussing all of public comments from the venue.
We're good.
So is there any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so at this time, then we can go into and discuss the ordinance with this term of course. Yes, Fran?
So, um, I wanted to address some of the explicit comments that Chad.
Yes, yeah.
This is the time to do that.
Yes.
And then I also wanted to, in due measure, address the council. So, um, number on page nine. So I'm assuming everything in red will, uh, stay unless we specifically change that. So I think to the comments in number three on page nine, um, the word place should be placed by, left on the public dock or other public space. I would like to put a time period in there, but, um, can't think, I might be placed on a, shall be left on the public dock or on the public space for more than an hour at a time, more than an hour, something like that to.
We can't monitor.
What's that? Is this impossible to monitor, something like that?
Well, but the, the.
It's, I think it's, uh, words of will not be left there would be.
Okay, I'm looking right there, that's what it's, uh, on J one. Um, what I'd like to do is change it to, um, remove the crab pots, storage box, what is it? On page, also on page nine, so, um, so it's just under that, and you're talking about, right at the top. Uh, so J one, um, storage boxes are not allowed to be stored, I mean, storage boxes, um, and remove, and crab pots, um, are not allowed on the docks, period.
Did you see? The words crab pots.
Correct. But I would like to add that, um, something to the effect that, um, well, okay, let's just leave it at that for now. So I think, uh, J two at the end of that, um, set by a relative resolution of the council, but not less than a hundred dollars, I think is fine, because our resolution would be more than a hundred. So I think Jack's putting, uh, but not less than a hundred would be good. And, um, on page twenty-one about, um, the point of contact, yeah, the point of contact. I want to leave it with the, um, unless a petition for.
the kind of content, yeah, the kind of content, I want to leave it with the, um, unless a petition for a charter has been, uh, uh, filed with the city council, uh, prior to that, and add another sentence in front of the part in red that says, um, the city council shall receive a recommendation on this petition from the harbor commission, period.
So the harbor commission would receive the petition?
No, the city council would receive the petition, but that the, um, the city council would, um, get a recommendation from the harbor commission on the petition.
Okay. So you might be talking several weeks between that, so that means that they would need to come before the harbor commission, and then getting on like the harbor commission, you see, and then like, so they might have to wait two weeks to be able to come to council. So, for two weeks.
The recommendation would be filed, the petition would be filed with the city council, and we'd ask the harbor commission for a recommendation on that.
How would you give the recommendation?
We would forward our request to the harbor commission for a recommendation.
So they would have to have a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So, and then you would have a meeting to approve it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's two meetings that we would have to, have them go to. They'd have to go to the harbor commission first to get a recommendation, and then they would come to city council.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Which, you know.
So I wanted to indicate that the final decision is with the city council, it does not do that now.
Right, it doesn't, because right now, I think what it just says is that the harbor commission first said, so it would need to be the harbor commission or the city council. Mean, meaning that if you want the city council to be the ultimate judge, then it would need states, yes.
So that's your, so that basically the city council. Now, I'll remove my thought, uh, if the harbor commission has a comment, it is provided. We have the time, period. Um, and in terms of the, um, so there's no other changes to the wording, except that I do want to add something about, because the crab pot, if we don't, um, I don't know how to get to the idea that, within this ordinance, we want to address the idea of the safety of the crab pots, or when we're, whether or not they're on the docks, and I don't know, um, if we don't do it now, if we have to come back and then open up this ordinance again, and I don't want to wait for that. So I don't, if, does anybody have a solution to how we could incorporate some wording about, um, getting, um, figuring it out?
I don't think it can go into an ordinance right now, what we can do is we can, um, make our changes now and set an open public meeting to go over this.
A workshop.
Because we do have to address it, folks, we, our insurance agent went down on Thursday, and they are saying they cannot restore it on the docks and that, and so we are looking at this as a issue that to keep our insurance current, so.
So, yeah, so I, that would be, but I would like to have a work session.
Yes.
People are suggesting, but I would like somehow to reflect in the ordinance that the storage of crab pots shall be addressed by separate ordinance?
No.
So can we do that?
No.
No.
Yeah.
But I don't want to put off the adoption of the rest of this ordinance to wait for the crab pot issue to be resolved.
You, you don't have to, you just need to implement it.
Oh, okay.
Right, so you could go ahead and adopt the ordinance, and then with the idea that, the idea of the motion being proposed by the council, have a decision and discuss our options with your crab pot.
Okay.
I can also.
That's a good idea.
Make our, um, insurance agent there, so, none of that, you asked, can I ask a question?
Yes. For the work session?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was my thoughts, but I wonder if it should.
I'm thinking that, so you wouldn't want to be able to make any decisions at the work session, you essentially want to come up with.
Work as just solutions, right.
So I was thinking if you want to come up with solutions and actually motion on something, you need it to be a specialty.
It'd be a specialty, yeah.
Just in case that you think you might want to do that.
No, it'd be good.
Yeah.
And it would be great to have an insurance agent there, to represent our interests.
Um, did, did, are we going to have an insurance agent there?
I, I will ask her to attend, yes.
You know, we have a report from the insurance agent, and this is, uh, I have to tell you, uh, I have many friends here from the charter fishing industry tonight. Jack O'Brien, the head of the commission, uh, and I agree that, you know, with you, that we need to have a meeting, but, uh, and I went down there and did what Commissioner, uh, Liz Martin suggested, take a walk through the harbor with fresh eyes, and I felt like, gosh, you know, this is going to be a, a real imposition on our, our charter clubs, I can tell that just by down there, but then I read this report, and I, and I wish that all of you would, uh, take a look at that report in our, in our, uh, packet, and it convinced me absolutely of, of why we have to get that stuff off the docks, and why we have to take a completely new attitude toward the docks. Uh, this report pointed out that these docks were messy and kempt and therefore dangerous. And I don't want to go into specifics of what they found down there, but, uh, it just, you know, reminded me of my concern at the last meeting, when I asked, why can't we enforce the ordinance as we have on the books right now? If we would have done that, maybe we wouldn't have an insurance agent down there stumbling around on loose wires and cords and dog feces and everything else that, uh, just, you know, caused this issue to come up. I mean, the city council didn't sit here and bring this up, it was, it's our legal end that's telling us that this stuff has to be, uh, has to be done. There's got to be a way, I was, I was glad to hear everybody step forward tonight with these ideas, because there's got to be a way to figure this out, so that, uh, this industry can continue to flourish. Uh, I want to say this also, uh, tonight, Jack O'Brien said some things that really resonated with me, and that is that, he, he called for, or, or agreed that we should bring this, uh, bring our rates into the twenty-first century and bring more, uh, funds into city coffers, uh, and decrease the harbor dependency on city funds. Uh, he argued that the, while the harbor will never be fully self-supporting, we should do all these things, and I'm not so sure that's the case. For some of you who might not have been here before, I, I went and investigated the history of our harbor, found out that in nineteen seventy-three, the residents of this town believed that this harbor would be a source of great funds for our city, and it would help us to do good things. And what's happened over the years is that we have subsidized this harbor from anywhere, just a mile in its distance, from about two hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollars a year. If we could get on the upside of that, so that we had a, uh, not a deficit, but maybe a surplus, imagine the things that we could do in this town, we could buy parts properly, we could, uh, we could solve many of the problems that we have.
We might get organized in this area.
Yeah.
Well, just let me wrap it up, then, if we would have applied a five percent increase every year from the beginning, when we took over this harbor and we were getting twenty-four thousand dollars a year, we would be getting two hundred and seven thousand dollars a day. Over a ten-year period, that's two million dollars. Thank you.
Is there any other changes or comments on the ordinance? So this is just the first reading, and so the second reading will be placed at our next, um, council meeting next week. So, how fast do you want it, would you like to look at a work session?
Mm-hmm.
I know the group said sometime in September, I guess that's after the bulk of the season, but isn't tuna coming?
We'll take September.
We'll take September, okay. Um, does the council have any thoughts? Do you want to do it, uh, before our first council meeting in September? With the, um, the, um, the, uh, labor pay tour.
Okay.
Nineteen.
He's getting off on a quick.
How about the, how about the. She's, uh, no, it's on the.
That's in the twenty.
Oh, it would, oh, okay.
In between, so.
Oh, that'd be good.
Second, the second two.
Okay. How about September twelfth, your council chambers, ten, six o'clock?
Do you need a later work session?
No.
This is a discussion session, I think social meeting, six o'clock on the twelve? Okay.
Okay, done it.
We're, we're going to, frankly, if I'm wrong, but we're going to have to kind of think outside the box to solve this, right?
Absolutely, we've been trying for months, uh, the harbor steering committee, because we're not going to start store crab pots on our new dock. So we've been already trying to bring store what we're going to do in the next couple of years, so we've got, you know, time to work on it. But we don't have time, we have our insurance. Yes, Dan.
The insurance agent will be there.
I will verify with her. And we'll be happy to let her know right away, that's enough time to give her time to get something set up.
Can we also make sure that everybody gets, uh, the opportunity to pay the reward?
Okay.
It's, it's supposed to be online?
It's online.
It's, it's in the packet, if you go to the meeting, it's packet. One, two.
Uh, I, yes, um, I understand that the insurance agent said a lot more to staff than they give them that day. Um, and I'm wondering, um, if either they could speak about that or know all of the laws that they would. Maybe, that could be, maybe they won't realize that they're, put it in writing again, include it with the board, and they could probably go to staff. I can do that. Kind of pretty easier.
Is it, anyone in here to have all the search, maybe have a town, can any of all, so come sit around and talk to me?
That'd be good, I do.
Probably, did it, we won't have soon now, right?
Wow.
Have to, maybe a phone. Well, we don't, we wouldn't have all of them, because.
I don't know.
We've done this home there.
I think we could, we could.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can stay here. Just reminder that the harbor commission, that how many times you guys have met on this, going over this, I, I sat for a couple of meetings and went over every line item and revised it, and the whole town had an opportunity to come to your meetings, so nobody should. So it's not like the public is not going to be given a chance to remain, but I'm all about, you know, JT has some great ideas for solutions on it. Honestly, dock one, but it happened a lot better today, so, I'll start again. Okay, so we'll move on then, to the first reading of the harbor commission ordinance, uh, three, four, one, dash twenty-three. Is there a motion to accept this ordinance, uh, what the woman likes? This is an ordinance repealing chapter ninety-two, section. To ninety-two point zero four, harbor commission adding chapter thirty-two, section thirty-two point zero nine, harbor commission. I, I moved that to, um, uh, read by title. Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, it's been moved to second to read by title only, for this number two, four, one, dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I do have, I think I have public comment on this one too.
Okay.
I'll make public comment. Um, Noi, yes, first up, this is.
But, wait, 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 wait.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the harbor commission, not the ordinance.
Okay.
Not, oh, okay. Okay.
Okay.
I wondered if there was maybe some confusion, we also have, uh, Brad?
Yep.
You're good, um, Lydia, uh, Tad, this is on the harbor commission. And Eva, how does this is, okay. Thank you.
So is there, um, there's no public comment, is there any discussion amongst council on this ordinance? So could you ask us, maybe?
Um, you, you could actually go pass it with the committee, because that's, that's where you can, if you were all, it's a agreement, you all have to give.
It's right here on page.
I know that it moves.
Just a warning.
Seventy-two. Twenty-nine.
Yes. Uh, that would be in the packet, do you?
Kimberly, I have to ask you something. She had a great, um, verbalization of why we're doing this, we're doing it to organize things, because all the ordinance, all the, all of the commissions are in one spot, and this bag was in a different spot, so now he's running those party and it's all ready.
With a, a few minor changes.
I'm ready to need you.
Which the harbor commission, commission approved it.
So, is, can we, if we can put this one vote tonight?
If the council settles, you can, go ahead and, and move to adopt the second.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the second reading.
Okay, moved in, is there a second? It moved in second to, um, I was going to the second meeting, uh, the ordinance three, four, one, dash twenty-three, and ordinance repealing chapter ninety-two, sections ninety-two point zero two through ninety-two point zero four, harbor commission and adding chapter thirty-two, section thirty-two point oh nine, harbor commission. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Is there any discussion on this? Is there a motion to accept it as presented? I'll move to, um, accept as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second to accept ordinance number three, four, one, dash twenty-three, ordinance repealing chapter ninety-two, sections ninety-two point oh two through ninety-two oh four, harbor commission and adding chapter thirty-two, section thirty-two point zero nine, harbor commission. Um, so any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand.
Uh, pardon me, this is a resolution, you can adopt it tonight, adopt it.
Oh, okay.
Is there going to be discussion on this?
Yes, yes, I do have people, but I have a feeling they're not, they may not want to, um, pretty much the same people, Noi, Brad, Lydia, Tad, Tyler, and Eva, do you want to think about the mortgage rates? Come on out.
Um, I honestly, this is not really a battle I have really, I, um, I feel like it's a reasonable, uh, suggestion, but we're going to end up ultimately getting crab pots taken away from us, I think this is something that, it kind of goes hand in hand. Um, financial impact of, you know, the expectations of more toddlers when they're, you know, having a slip here in harbor to, in order to do business, you're going to take away a significant piece of that, and then just on top of that, increase their rates is kind of just kind of an extra, you know, dagger that you're supposed to see. So I just would like to say that, I, I feel like they kind of go hand in hand, but, um, you know, if it was on its own, I really don't have the, any right. you know, if it was on its own, I really don't have the, any argument, but if we're gonna make significantly impacted down growth because of, you know, restrictions on crabbing, this just seems like an added, um, you know, negative impact from where we, potentially it's gonna be taking a big hit.
Any other comments on this?
And if we're gonna take the rest, I mean, guys, um, I just wanted to say that I actually thank you guys for researching all of these rates up and down, of course, because I didn't know them myself, so, um, it was good to see the comparison, I appreciate that, and we don't really oppose this because our rates are actually very reasonable, so, um, the only thing that I did see was, um, the best price annual adjustment mortgage might be less than, right, was in a future which is five percent is reasonable, I guess the only thing that would say is maybe some kind of verbiage that makes it so that it's not, you know, eighty percent a year, but, um, other than that, I think all these, these are actually pretty better, and I don't, you know, inflation things are more expensive now, so we can use that, and the rates really happen to adjust it a lot, so, um, we appreciate you guys doing the research and a lot of putting out, of course, because I honestly don't know.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. So are there any other comments on, um, resolution, you know?
Council, we said it's.
You know. Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion of it and open up for council discussion.
Well, I have a, first of all, let me ask a question, uh, did, did we include the fishing, the fees for fishing guide services, or fishing room, or a charter fee, or anything like that?
We haven't established those yet.
We haven't established those, yeah. When would we establish those?
The Harvard Commission is now working on it.
Okay, okay.
Would that, would, would that be in the, um, business licensing section? Pardon, business licenses versus these, uh, mortgage rates? Would those be, be? Sorry, um, out of the work session, one of the things that the council concurred on is exploring a charter license and efficient, kind of efficient guide service license, so there'd be the business license, and then there might be a charter license on top. Uh, you asked that basically to come back towards the Harvard Commission and maybe come back, saying we can either come directly to you or the Harvard Commission and present something on that, but it might be good for the Harvard Commission to. But yes, I, I, I've been doing the research and will go back to that, and family did a bunch of, Council Record did a bunch of research.
I have another, yes, and thank you for, uh, to Counselor Red for doing that, that really opened my eyes, um. We, there's, there's another, on page one of thirty-seven here, there's another point under paragraph two discussion. Move provision for the storage, for the mortgage rates, the adjusted annually by resolution for the city council, and make them automatically adjusted annually by the CPI. So that's part of this ordinance?
For the resolution.
Right.
For this resolution, well, uh, I disagree with that, I don't think we should be slaying CPI, we have to bring these, uh, these rates into line. It's like Jack said, you gotta bring them to the twenty-first century, if we automatically hook them to the CPI, we'll be forever forty percent behind of everybody else. Everybody else uses CPI, we have to move forward on these rates, for fifty years, these rates have been artificially suppressed to the point where they're, they have no basis in reality. Uh, we should, in fact, I would, can I make a motion right now?
Pardon, pardon me, uh, I'm sorry, Counselor, first of all, the page one that you're talking about is actually related to the Harvard ordinance, but the mortgage rates, it, it was a suggestion to make them automatic by CPI, the council always has the ability to increase it by more. So when it came time to present to the council the increase, we would, the council would say, okay, CPI is four percent, we want to go to five, six, seven percent, the council always has that right, it's not just gonna say, it doesn't say we stop the CPI, it just says that we do it that way, but you still.
Is there any reason that we shouldn't be on par with the eight other harbors on the Oregon coast? Why do we have to be perennially the lowest or the next to the lowest when it comes to mortgage rates?
Wouldn't need it, these increases. Well, we've had this discussion and we all agree that we're in a profit pretty, pretty strong one this year, and a new doc's coming, and it's a whole new volume, so, right?
Right. The reason we have to separate it out from the Harvard ordinance now is so we can adjust these rates pretty easily, easily, every, every year, whenever we want, but automatically, it's gonna get a rate, you calculate it, if we had done five percent every year, for example, where it would have been, so this would make sure we don't forget that every year it would be, make sure it's at least at the CPI, but it doesn't preclude us from, um, changing the fees again like we're doing, we're hoping to do this year.
You know, we have talked about a lot of this, uh, to, in, in this harbor, crab pots, we talked about rates, we talked about reinstating leases, charter licenses, uh, storage fees, and all of these things, uh, need to come together. I don't think, I haven't heard anybody object to the idea that Deepwater Bay shouldn't be at parity with its rates with other harbors, and other harbors and ports, you gotta remember, are supported by taxes, we are not. And I'm not, I don't wish to impose any kind of a hardship on my friends in the charter industry. On the other hand, I, I, I would like to talk to them as equals, as people who are, you know, uh, paying, you know, like, not just being subsidized, but by, uh, by these policies, so, you know, that said, I can support this, I guess, I wish we, we could, you know, move forward.
I also have to point out that we've been very lucky here in Deepwater Bay, how do we get dock number one replaced? Well, we had a tsunami, that's how we got dock one replaced, how are we getting docks two, three, and four replaced? Well, we had COVID, and so we received three million dollars in grants from situations where not in our control, we do not have any funds set aside for replacement of those docks, and we've got to start doing that now. And we've got to start today, making these hard decisions is, yes, we've got to be fair because I don't want another tsunami, I don't want another COVID, and we've got to be realistic about these things, as, it's not only parity, but paying our way and, and putting aside funds so that we can make the repairs, we've gotta keep the repairs up, we've gotta keep the maintenance up. And, um, I think it's important for us to look at, you know, going forward with repairing, uh, not waiting for the next disaster to gift us, so, that's why I took this, um, we have different rates here that we are talking about, um, I'd like to discuss, we've got two that we discussed in our work session last week, the forty-five and the forty-eight, I really am not comfortable with, like, doing two different ones just for the charter commercial, commercial people, so, um, if we could either adopt either the forty-five or the forty-eight, I don't know, the line there, I would appreciate that. Yeah, yes. So there's two rates, right? One for charter slash commercial, and one for sport fishing, I think that's fair. Um, they have, they're only, they're slightly different, but it, it seems right that the charter commercial pay more than just sport fishing.
I just think it's easier to have it the same way.
Uh, um, staff is supportive of the two different rates, um, simply for the same reason, that council break to staff, that the little, like, little votes, you know, um, it, it's the earning back to jump to forty-eight, you know, if that's what the group decided to do, um. It's, it is a, it'll be a challenge to track, but.
A challenge to track, you know, would visiting more pay for work on our office?
Just, I don't have any, so just keeping them straight, I've talked to, I'm, I'm individual here, but, um, it's for, for us, it's just making sure that we know which ones, uh, forty-five and the forty-eight.
I just thought it'd be easier to.
Sure, I have a question.
So, when I, so, I mean, I'm, I'm good with the two different rates, and I'm, we were thinking that dock, and for now, until the other day, but, um, what I'm looking at, and I really think, um, our staff, people in Harley, put this together, so, if you look at the Harvard Commission recommendation for their, um, you know, in general, Harvard Commission recommendation, that would be charter, sport, everything, uh, but then when you go to Harvard Commission recommendation for transient mortgage, the monthly rate is three twelve, and the daily per day rate is thirty-four fifty-six, um, um, it's versus three oh nine per day as an annual, or three eighty-five a day, or monthly, so, the monthly is, for example, for a twenty-six foot boat is three hundred twenty-one dollars essentially, and, um, man, for a, for a twenty-six foot boat is ninety-seven dollars as a man, so it's, so, we have, I, I don't have abandoned to think about it now, but so, I don't, maybe there's no transient mortgage holders on the Harvard Commission, but I don't know why we sort of stick to the transient mortgage people so much, any other?
I don't know either.
Okay. Not that I suggest that they pay less, but I'm thinking, we need to look at it, when we look at raising rates when we have the dock, so.
So, you know, I just feel like we're, we're dancing around this, I want to make sure I get, you know, to look into the crystal ball future. You're saying that when these docks, these new docks are installed, we're gonna bring the rates to the parity with the eight other Oregon harbors, we're gonna write in the median there, is that what you're saying?
I think we're probably.
We're gonna investigate looking at whatever it takes to cover our expenses.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that's even, you know, uh, should be a problem, I can't imagine anybody, even here, if anybody, you know, would protest that, the idea of, of, you know, paying what is equivalent, or the median, or the par, or the average of other harbors. I'm just, you know, I'm really concerned about this, that, that this is gonna get away from us, and the council's gonna come in, but, uh, you know, this, this, this has just lingered for so long.
Okay, so, any other comments on resolution number five four three dash twenty-three? Is there a motion to accept, uh, this resolution as presented?
The general.
And, and can I just verify we're, we're accepting this, the forty-five and the forty-eight?
Oh, right, yeah, I have forty-eight, yeah.
I have a motion.
So then.
Is there any other discussion, um, discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm ready. Thank you.
Any other question?
Does this mean we all have to get the letters in? Yes and no, we would get the letters out, but, um, some of the, I just want to make sure that people know that it will, so this, like, crab pot, not to each other, you know, just. We'll figure out, but yes.
I love it about the works of these.
Yeah.
Okay, under new business, um, we've got Oregon Cascades, Cascades Council of Government, um, this was part of our, our budgeting process, that Karen and she are looking for, uh, separate business for IP, and they came down with a big proposal, and now it's just a member of my new contract, when is it, twenty-five thousand, we can give it to you.
I actually put in like a thirty thousand to rent it out, so you can see, but it does give us any little grant in case they get in here and find some challenges. But I'm actually just getting started, so I can get on the file, and you guys can possibly get on the file.
So, okay, yes.
Yeah.
So are you comfortable with the budget now and getting support?
Uh, with Council Government, yes, absolutely, I've worked with them very closely in Miller's Park, and they did have some challenges when I got there for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, but they had a new director, and they have a new IP, and they have hundred and fifty years, that's better than they used to be.
Any other questions on the contract? Is there a motion to accept the, uh, contract with COG as presented?
I move that we accept the Oregon West Cascades Council Government proposal for tech services, and, uh, sign it, their government will agree.
Is there a second? A second. It's been moved to second to accept, uh, accept the, uh, cost estimate of forty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars as presented, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Go get her. Okay, she's so excited.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, how are we doing here? Too much.
National line out.
Yeah, okay, national line out, um, I would rate this big work council because I had a blast that night, and it was so much, it was just so much fun, everybody had like comments were just amazing, and so I would like to take the action, um, our city reporter took this on herself, and she paid most of this for herself, that worries a lot of, a lot of.
That had some help.
Yes, she did have some help, so, um, I'd like to make a motion myself to refund, uh, five hundred dollars to us with city reporter for her expenses that she, uh, personally. Lay down. I don't know.
I'm not telling.
Okay.
Five hundred is more than reasonable.
Mayor, we would have to have some receipts or something.
I bring the receipts, she'll have receipts.
Thank you.
I meant, actually, Counselor, I was gonna bring it to them, so we can table this back from the eighteen.
How about we just make a contingent, uh, deliberate, recent work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be.
Can I, whoever made the motion?
I do.
Can you ask me to accept that?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Uh, uh, okay, any other discussion? Even if I.
That's up to five hundred dollars, they still have.
Even though I need to.
Yeah.
I have some discussion, um, Kim, I want to thank you for your work, you, city, everybody that got places, and writing there too, and what having, but I wanted to also remind you, you know, that there's also people in city council that can help you with volunteering, have time, so don't always feel like you have to take it on yourself.
This one I did, I appreciate, this one I did because it was really my idea, and, um, I, I really wanted to do something for the city, and, um, now that it was so successful, because I've got Harvard on it, it happened, so, um, and just, now that it was so successful, I, I, I definitely will need, although I already have a bunch of people who wants, already can do help next year, um, the sheriff and, um, fire, everybody's so excited about doing again, probably does very well, I know Brady's excited about it. Brady.
Meet with us.
And there's so many people I might just send, um, like, uh, Sandy and Mark Dweer.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I'm Debbie Dappola, and, um, Dylan, what's his name?
From Chester.
Dylan from Chester.
Oh, yeah, Dylan has this.
Oh, my gosh, everybody's contact information, including the people that donated, I did get a lot of donations from surrounding businesses. Whereas, I would like to send them all, thank yous, before I did, I wanted to know if the council would like to sign them. I'll bring them to next Tuesday's meeting, or if you want to come in at your convenience, um, I'll get to this because I look at this thirty-five, you know, that contributed in some way, putting volunteers, that's true.
Jack, did you?
Yeah, I have a suggestion for, for the next one, um, you can make a lot of money on this, I think. Propose, talk to the sheriff and everything, but charge X amount for those of us who'd like to drive that huge vehicle. Propose, talk to the sheriff and everything, the charge X amount for those of us who'd like to drive that huge vehicle around the park.
Oh my god, tactical.
I've been personal.
The sheriff's tank.
That would be great.
And speaking of donations, our emergency, we see donations.
Yeah.
We did try to.
I heard that.
Yeah.
Such a good one.
Yeah.
That was wonderful.
Why do I think it's quilt?
I have a quilt.
Yeah, we receive that.
Yeah, quilt.
So and then we um everybody that came by, we mentioned that you employ tools and blankets and. You know, sweep bags and things like that, so that's only bring it to you. Right now. But I think um as we get into more of our city donations, we'll have our own rights and issues. Okay, so we had a motion, five hundred bucks, so that um all in favor say aye, I think.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks for being on board for it next year.
Put it on the calendar or later, right?
It'll be soon to be there.
This person's very young.
Um I'm first in line for canine too, by the way.
Okay.
We couldn't get them this year because they go fast, but I would ask Carl to put this people bay first one in.
He's trying to have a beer, girl.
Actually, I will do that. I did have a lot of people go, where's beer? Didn't you?
Yeah.
So we will.
So what's you know, if I can help you with some.
I I will. We'll put it in for me, yeah. We'll have a plan.
Okay, we have no staff reports, closing, have other comments? Okay.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be long, I I love the national night out, my wife got to pretend to drive the coastcar to vote.
Oh, I did that too.
Yeah, it was awesome, I gave a head three times, my only my only I had nothing to complain about except it was giving me a hot dog after I already got a hamburger.
I want.
Well, yeah, so maybe if we make sure there's enough hot dog and hamburgers supplies next time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll we'll have a conversation, because they had plenty left over.
Oh, really? Okay.
I met I saw Dylan at 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 I thought he had one pack, but he said no, I have several. Um we'll make sure you get a hot dog next time.
Okay, that's fair, thank you.
Any other comments? Uh council comments? You have to start, um you have to start briefly, why don't you start?
Uh I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So I should I should have brought these up, I'm sorry, under um with Braden and Kim are talking. Uh another um Braden, another concerned citizen um asked me if we can spray the weeds. And um she lives in uh Alsea and um sunset ugly and I don't think we do.
No, we don't. We we have we use um like vinegar and salt and dish soap. Uh gallon in the curves, but you have to be a licensed um in in stable, we're getting to spread herbicide and so we. We just do a home remedy, it seems to work fine. When it starts raining, it kind of washes it away and we get weeds, you know, every year we gotta. You know, remove them and then we put the vinegar and salt down, it seems to work. But as far as like vacant lots and rite of waste, we do not.
And state of origin.
Requires like some cities do, I know ODOT does along highway one one, they.
Yeah, those were uh there were two parks close to Happy, that was required next year to go do that annually as we announced. So if the city did that, they just not spray it away.
No, but we can uh uh for we did.
Whether they're worried or not.
That's the thing, I know when he told me, a lot of people are not using that.
Some people worry about spraying because they're they're picking blackberries, especially this time of year, and they're wondering, were they sprayed by collars or some, you know, areas like that.
Yeah, um just um wanting to figure out how um. We can provide more citizens to uh report, um maybe um have a.
To the who?
Record. Um have a set of work session or we have we don't you didn't budget for the additional staff, but the amount of time and effort that it's it's out. You know, some everybody needs personal time, I don't wanna burn people out, that happens if people don't really have personal time. And and for just time not to be involved with work and so um we didn't budget for this year, but we do have contract services that. That might be looked at, but we should probably sit down with staff and see if there is some. I mean, I'd like to at least, I don't know if you're off the tail, but um I would like to at least have a work session to see what the needs are and how we can. Reduce uh the time of work. This is a work session. We're dedicated to the prioritization of projects, either in work or sessions, so. Okay. Thank you.
Nothing's great.
Nothing. Nothing, yeah, I have um a comment from our last executive session that there was a lot to, so we're going for it, we'll take the other decision. Okay, so we're done. Okay, bye, thank you.
Okay.